for March 4, 2013 at 6:30 PM. We have a new secretary with us tonight, Laurie. Would you please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Terry Parks.
Here.
Dana Pruse.
Yes, ma'am.
Peter Mulcahy.
Yes, ma'am.
James Ferguson.
Here.
Tyler Robinson.
Here.
John Spring.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. Under Special Order of Business disclosures, Vice Chair Parks, would you please handle the disclosures?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Commissioner Spring?
I have no conflicts.
Okay. Commissioner Dean?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Robinson?
In the matter of case S-11970-1, I simply wanted to disclose that I happened to attend an Eagle River Community Council in which the petitioner brought this case forward to share with the community. I believe it's likely similar information to what we're all going to hear this evening, just a little bit about the case and a little discussion with the community, but wanted to make sure that I disclose that for the body.
Thank you. Do we have any issues with that, anybody? And we'll recommend that you do participate. Thank you. Commissioner Ferguson, please?
None.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Well, similar to, "Once upon a time," five years ago, I worked for a clutna, but having no financial ties to them in the last five years.
Okay, and you don't have any issues with that, okay. And do we have any concerns on the board?
No.
Okay. And then we'll also instruct you to participate.
Thanks, sir.
I have none. Commissioner Laura?
In the matter of case 2013-014-S11970-1, I too have had in the past certain business dealings with the clutna. However, I'm not a party to this case and these cases and have no financial interest and have no additional information. That's not in the packet.
Commission, have any comments? We'll ask you to participate also. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Under item number C-2, Annual Election of Officers, what is the wish of the commission?
Madam—
Um, I'm sorry, I'm not in the queue.
She hasn't signed in yet.
Must have been a reason for that. Commissioner Parks?
Thank you, Chair, Madam Chair. I would make a motion that you retain the Chair of this committee.
And that motion has been seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Thank you very much for your vote of confidence. We also need to elect a vice chair. A vice chair. Commissioner Parks, are you in the queue? No?
No, she hasn't.
Oh, all right. Thank you. Commissioner Mulcahy?
Excuse me. I'd like to move that Commissioner Terry Parks continue as vice chair if he's willing to accept.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have a seconded by Commissioner Ferguson? All right. Any objection? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. All right. Thank you. If I can, just take a moment on the agenda at this particular time to talk a little bit about our schedules. And also, I'd like to take this opportunity to poll the commissioners to see, to ask them about their schedules, what their preference is, and also what they consider to be their top priorities for this coming year. So, let's just start right down. You elected me, so I get to do this.
That's pretty wild.
No, and I don't necessarily think that's—first of all, I would like to say that I appreciate all the considerations that staff has made for schedules. I would like to state that we are volunteers, and many of us plan our discretionary time, travel time, the second half of the month in order to accommodate the schedules. And it is sometimes a little difficult or disconcerting to have meetings scheduled the latter half of the month even with consultants. So, my suggestion would be that, you know, to me, it makes no difference whether we start at 5:30 or 6:30 on the first two Mondays of every month. And I would like to see our work sessions and consultant meetings on the various plans sort of limited to that particular time. So, I'd like to hear what everyone else has to say about that. Let's just start down at the end, Commissioner Robinson, and then just continue on down.
Madam Chair, you just mean specifically whether my preference is to hold meetings at 5:30, additional meetings rather than during the week and during the day?
Yes.
I mean, I would say certainly that's always better with my schedule. You know, that said, I do recognize there are times when that's not convenient for a consultant or for whatever reason. So, I try to be flexible whenever possible. But yes, that'd be preferable.
All right. Thank you. Do you have any priorities for this coming year?
None that I can think of right now.
All right.
Keep getting the work done.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Ferguson?
I would prefer to meet at 5:30. I have no problem with that. I have a problem with meetings getting moved, like the luncheon with the director coming up. I had scheduled my travel around the date that I had. And I—because I take the position very seriously, and I try to attend them. And so, when I planned out of state travel and I had a choice, I could have done it the other way. And then I find out no advance notice, nothing, the calendar comes out and the meeting has moved, and that I can't attend it. And I feel as a commissioner, I'm supposed to do that. And I would like to at least get advance notice, but I would prefer them not moving on that. As to going forward, I'd like to—Title 21 isn't quite all dead and buried. I know there's going to be issues coming up on Title 21, and I'd like to see us address those as they come forward. I've got some concerns on the Design Criteria Manual, and I'm curious to what's going to happen on that. And keep doing our job.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mulcahy?
I concur. The first two Mondays, I pretty much from noon on—I try to keep my afternoons flexible for meetings. So, even prior to 5:30, depending on the nature of the work session, because some of these require more time. But yeah, I'd like to have those the last two Mondays of the month, two or three, a little more predictable. Priorities, we've got some, what, the East Anchorage District Plan, the UMed Plan are in the works, the Chugatch Access Plan is scheduled, I believe, Wetlands Plan. So, we've got—that's quite a bit of work right there. And I concur with Commissioner Ferguson. Title 21 is approved, but I don't think the work's done. I think we've got some things that we—some was looking at some possible amendments, and the Design Criteria Manual is also of concern.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, I too work better if I can plan well in advance. I do do some traveling, and I do try to keep my first two Mondays in the week available, or in the month. And I would appreciate continuing that. And I would prefer a 5:30, even a 4:30 meeting on a Monday is better to me than having to meet during the week sometime. I too would second that the last two commissioners on the Design Criteria Manual, I think is something that really needs some work done on it. We need to make sure that it gets under control in Title 21. I think there are some things that still need to be cleaned up, but I think it's minor. I'm very happy with what we have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Dean?
Madam Chair, I'm perfectly happy with starting at 5:30 instead of 6:30 those two nights. What I'd like to see us do as a commission is look harder at all the overall plans that we're looking at, and what the schedule for those plans are, and what are the budgets from a financial standpoint for each one of those plans. I'd also like to spend a little more time investigating outside consultants for these plans, potentially coming from in-state instead of— plans, potentially coming from in-state instead of out-of-state. But I'd like to look at the overall overview of the planning department and how we can all work better together.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Spring?
Yes, Madam Chair. I am completely flexible. Whatever's the convenient for the rest of the members is fine with me. It is nice, though, to have three weeks in between meetings at the end of the month, I have to say, in case I have opportunity to travel. As far as my priorities, I'm too new to really to have any real deep-seated feelings about that. But I would like to put a pitch in for perhaps being considered for UMed District Plan Liaison, unless Stacy would like to do that, or somebody else. I have a long-time interest in that area, and I've given a lot of thought about the development of that, and would appreciate the opportunity to serve on that committee if we have a—
We would welcome that. We would absolutely welcome that. So, thank you very much. I too realize that Title 21 may be subject to some amendments that may or may not actually come before this commission. I'm not sure what the appropriate protocol for that will be. But one, several of you have voiced concerns about the Design Criteria Manual, which currently does not have any public process for review. And I know that there is discussion at the assembly level for planning and zoning to take a look at the DCM if and when there is an opportunity for a public review. And I would welcome that opportunity as well. You know, we call ourselves the Planning and Zoning Commission. A lot of our work has, in the past, had an emphasis on zoning, but I think we recognize through Title 21 that these long-range plans, whether it be the Chugatch Access Plan, the Wetlands Plan, the neighborhood plans, or the district plans, have very significant influence over our work and need to be perhaps given more serious consideration than what has not necessarily occurred in the past, but should become—take more of a leading role in the work that we do. So, Erica, if you could take our comments and give those back to the director and the long-range planning supervisor as well, we would appreciate that. I think what I've heard from the commission today is that it doesn't really matter when we start on the first two Mondays of every month, but that we really would like, because we're volunteers, to keep the remainder of the month relatively free of additional meetings. And in the future, when consultants and we go out for RFPs, if you could keep our schedule sort of in the forefront of your mind so that consultants can come on Mondays, the first couple of Mondays of every month, and maybe at 4:00 or 4:30, I'd appreciate—we'd all appreciate that.
Thank you for your input, Madam Chair. And I would note Ms. Wong is here, so she and I are both hearing this.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right. Moving on to item C3, Information Item Case 2013-035, Concept Report for A Street and 48th Avenue Extension and Upgrade. This is not a public hearing. This is an information item. And do we have someone here, a consultant, to brief us, please?
Madam Chair? Well, she's getting set up—
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe from staff, real quick, where we're at in the process and why this is an informational item, and when will we see, real quick? Can we get that from somebody?
All right. Thank you very much.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Mulcahy. Context-sensitive design projects, which is how our transportation projects are done these days, are a three-phase review at this, and we're in Phase 1, which is the concept report, and that is brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an informational item. Within a couple of months, it really varies on project by project. There will be a design study report, which will come to you for our review and recommendation. And then, months after that, there is the Plans in Hand Review, which goes to the Urban Design Commission. This is a three-phase review process that happens on both city road projects and state road projects. We're talking here collectors and higher classification. And not—the city has also negotiated an agreement with the state that they go through the same process on these projects. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name's Mary Ellen Tuttle with DalhKAM, and here representing the Municipality of Anchorage Public Works or Project Management and Engineering Section. The municipality received a grant from the State of Alaska to improve the circulation in the area of A Street and 48th in Midtown. This is an area that's rapidly been developing along C Street, in a number of hotels, restaurants, and other commercial uses. And there's been a gap in the circulation system in that a portion of 48th is missing and a portion of A Street is missing. So, you've got 48th comes down to here, and goes up a little bit from C Street, but there's a gap in the middle. And then, A Street goes to 51st, and there's a gap between 51st and where? So, this project basically is proposed to fill those gaps and to improve the circulation. Right now, if someone's leaving from one of, say, the hotels on the north end of C Street and the A Street area, they can't easily get to the airport. They either have to come out onto C Street and go north, and then west and back south to the airport, or they can go up Tudor and make a U-turn. But they can't really get easily to the south and west to the airport. Similarly, people in the neighborhood can't really drive easily to some of the facilities that are right there on C Street, restaurants and things. And similarly, some of the people from the hotels can't get to those restaurants easily. So, again, this is really just filling that hole where we've got this circulation hole in the middle of this developing midtown area. And so, we have been working with the community. We've been to the community council a few times. We've had open houses. We had a walk-through with the community. We've also met with all of the utilities and municipal agencies to talk about their concerns. And so, we've put together the concept report for you that outlines the issues that the public and the agencies have brought up, and the thoughts in the possible cross-sections that would be used to complete 48th Avenue as a collector and A Street as a local street. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioner Dean?
Through the Chair. My first question is, is water and sewer lines going to be brought through on those roads?
Through the Chair. We've been coordinating with the utilities, and there are some plans to bring some utilities through, including water. I believe sewer may— Unfortunately, that doesn't show water and sewer. But we are coordinating with them to make sure that this is their opportunity to get those in while we're doing the road.
And then, my second question is—it may not be able to be answered by you. It may have to come from staff. Will the landowners be assessed for these improvements, or is taxpayer dollars going to be paying for these roads? Do you know?
This project is being conducted with a state grant, so it is a state grant fund to the city, which is being used for the roads.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Spring?
Yeah. I think it's a very good report. I think you did a good job of trying to address all the issues.
Thank you.
Especially the pedestrian and the non-motorized, I thought was far better than some of the ones in the past have been. I do have a question about truck access, though. I don't know if I missed it, or if you considered the need for truck access in the design of A Street and/or 48th. Is it 48?
Yeah.
Those businesses along C Street, seems to me, would probably get truck access along A Street, because you can't really access it via C Street. And I don't know what the size of trucks would be. They're mostly service-type of trucks. I'm assuming it wouldn't be like the 53-footers or whatever. But is that something that should be considered in the design study report?
You're right. That's something that should be considered, and none of the property owners brought that up. But it is an area that has a mixture of commercial and even some light industrial uses. So, you're right, that's a good issue for us to talk with the freight movers and just see if they have any concerns.
One other question, too. I don't know if you have anything to do with this, but the vacation of 50th Avenue seems to be tied in with this improvement, which makes sense. And if there's a need for parking, it makes sense to vacate it. But have you considered the possibility of a pedestrian or bicycle easement as a long part of that right of way? Is that an issue that was brought up?
My understanding is that that vacation was approved by the Plating Board, and the only condition put on it was that it could not be implemented until alternative roads were constructed.
Commissioner Ferguson?
On the intersection between 48th and A, is that a full stop intersection, a civilized intersection?
Right. We are looking—we're not sure right now what stop controls will be at the different intersections that we're completing. Are you talking about the one that exists or the new one?
The new one.
Yeah. That has not been decided yet. In the concept report, we talk about the fact that it could be a four-way stop or just a two-way stop with the collector 48th being allowed to go and the local road stopping.
What about traffic circle?
Traffic signal?
Traffic circle.
That's something that could be looked at. That takes a little more room than the other options, but that's an option that could be looked at. I don't believe that was raised in the public—by the public, or the property owners, or other users.
But I mean, it seems to be—I mean, I look at O'Malley—or, not O'Malley. Yeah. What's the one off of New Sword there? Huffman. What?
Huffman?
Well, Huffman's got three, but I think—
Four.
Parallel to—decks intersection to Tudor, which is south of Tudor. Anyway, I just—the traffic circle might work there.
Thank you. We'll consider that.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. Couple of questions. One, is there some talk about using the street for on-street parking for some of the businesses and so forth? I think it would have been helpful to see a cross-section showing, you know, how you would show parking either on one side or the other, and how that interfaces with the pedestrian facilities, and whether you can—if you include parking, you know, reduce the separation with the idea that the parking is itself the buffer between the pedestrian and the road. So, I wanted to kind of see what that would look like, how much space that would take up. The other comment I had is, you know, I'm just still kind of surprised that when we talk about sidewalks on collectors, the separation distance that we're really talking about is really a shoulder and a little bit of an additional decorative pavement. We're not actually—I mean, to me, a separated sidewalk from a roadway is a certain amount of grass. It doesn't have to be planted, but just some true separation from the roadway. It's a great place to put snow in the wintertime. It separates the pedestrians a little bit. And I would rather neck the road down a little bit and leave that a true separation from the side of the curb to the sidewalk. I don't see that as—you know, is this just because this is sort of the cross-section that's accepted in the DCM? Or is that—you know, what is it that we really mean when we talk about separation on collector streets in particular?
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson, that is what the DCM shows right now, is a seven-foot separation between the line of—the lane of travel and the pedestrian facility. But again, that's why it might be a good idea for you guys to review the Design Criteria Manual and give those types of comments. But we can definitely look at the potential to maybe narrow it down and give a greater buffer between the pedestrians and the vehicle lanes. And we will be looking at the potential for whether it makes sense to use parking as part of that buffer or not.
Thank you. And I guess with that, you know, you're improving these sections of roadway, and then clearly, as you continue on, the roads aren't necessarily going to be the same section as what you're improving. What's the idea there? I mean, is it that over time, it would be—it would match? Are we always going to have a mismatched section of road? I mean, how do we, you know, fully, at some point, build out our street sections the way we say, hey, this is what we want in this particular area?
That's a good question. I wish I had a really good answer for you. But we will be looking at how do you blend this section in. When we come up with the design study report in the recommended section, we will look at how you blend that in with the existing. I don't know that we would be able to continue that through the whole length of these outside the area that we have funding for. And I think the hope would be that eventually, as road improvements go on, the rest of the road would be brought up to that standard. But as you know, it's a continuing process.
Great. I would appreciate it if—so, in the next—remind me what—
Design Study Report.
—the design study report, if you could make sure that those are incorporated. One final thing, you know, you've got a sidewalk and two-footed decorative pavement. Why not just a seven-foot sidewalk? I mean, is the decorative—I mean, pavement cheaper than the concrete? Is it more expensive? If it's more expensive, get rid of the darn thing and put a seven-foot sidewalk in, or create enough of a landscape buffer that, again, at least some grass can grow in there. That would—I'm growing kind of tired of some of the stuff that looks good in a picture, but really doesn't add any real value the vast majority of the year in our climate. And if you have a wider sidewalk, then great. It's a—that's what—in effect, what you're actually putting in there. That would be my wish list. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Parks?
I have a couple of comments that I just make. I too am concerned about traffic volume and speed on A Street. When you improve that, it will be a thoroughfare that is not available today that I think you're going to see used heavily. And I'm not sure that the transitions that you have between International and the new A Street that you're putting in, and when it converts down—and I assume it's going to neck down to some degree, because that's not a very wide road there. I don't think it meets the standards that way, I can remember. The other thing is 48th Avenue goes all the way from C Street to Old Seward, and I think this road will impact things that are much further down on that road than what you're anticipating here. And I'm a little concerned about controlled access on lots of those intersections on that roadway. There are now stop signs at most of those, I believe. The last time I traveled down that road, it was some time. But it is a commercial road, and there's a lot of traffic that's in the road for long periods of time, loading and unloading, backing trailers into a couple of places. And I think with that extended traffic, it's something that we need to look at. Because I do think, once you open up from C Street all the way to Old Seward, there'll be a huge amount of traffic on there. It'll take a lot of traffic off of International Airport Road, in my opinion. It'll come off the Old Seward Highway, and it'll also come off C Street to get back in those industrial areas, but you don't have to travel there now. I would hope that you would take a look at those and at least consider it into the design criteria from the standpoint of how you're going to handle it, because it may impact it, and you don't even see it yet. It may be something down the road. Thank you.
Appreciate that. And I should clarify that the project does include upgrading a small portion of A Street to the south of where we're building the new road, so we'll be able to wind it in a little bit.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments?
I would just simply like to reiterate what Ms. Dean said, and would encourage you to—I hate to see another road built without the extension of water and sewer in this community, really, quite frankly. It does a disservice to the taxpayers and to everyone else that is involved. And so, I would just encourage more communication with AWU for those extensions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Thank you very much.
There is no action that needs to be taken at this particular time. So, thank you very much for the report. Under— Under the consent agenda, resolutions for approval, and then we have a non-public hearing regarding a time extension for a natural resource extraction. Is there a motion for approval? Commissioner Parks.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
All right, thank you very much. It's seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Is there anyone who wishes to pull any of those items? All right, seeing and hearing no one, the consent agenda is approved. Thank you. We are now moving on to the regular agenda and then public hearings, case 2013-018. The petitioner is Tara-
No, 2014.
P.E.T.R.I.C.C.A. Forgive me, I'm not quite sure how to pronounce it. The request is the rezoning to B3 General Business, 1.25 acres. May we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is this on? All right. This site is located in Eagle River, east of the Old Glen Highway and south of North Wanita Loop. The site consists of three parcels. The southern lot is currently used as a strip mall with Piccolino's Restaurant as the anchor tenant, and that parcel was zoned B3 SL in 1982. The special limitations on that parcel required that the area be replatted and that the non-conforming uses be removed. Both of those conditions have been met and staff recommends that that parcel just become a plain B3. The northern two lots that front North Wanita Loop Road are vacant and they are both zoned R1A, sort of creating a peninsula of low-density residential housing that jets out into the commercial corridor along Old Glen Highway. The department finds that the rezoning of these parcels to B3 is consistent with the Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan, which designates the parcels as commercial. And the zoning amendment is in the best interest of the public with regards to the environment, transportation, public service and facilities and land use patterns. Therefore, the department recommends approval of the rezoning. Thank you.
Are there any questions from commissioners of the staff? Commissioner Spring.
Couple of questions. Does this rezoned lot that's adjacent, that's going to be used for parking, have to be replatted? Or does, in order to use it as a parking lot for the mall?
Through the chair, Commissioner Spring, no, it does not. Need to be replatted. Off-street parking is a permitted use in the B3 district.
There doesn't have to be a parking agreement then, either?
If they expanded their restaurant, then they would need a parking agreement. I believe that that is the intent of needing the expanded parking lot, so yes.
So they have sufficient parking on the existing lot? And this would be surplus parking?
It is my, it is my understanding that it is for an expansion of the restaurant to add more tables.
So that doesn't require a parking agreement then, if it's a separate lot?
It would require a parking agreement.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Second, are there any SLS that you're proposing for this?
Through the chair, no. We're just straight B3.
There was a statement, I think, on page 22, which says that any entryway to the property will be through the adjacent lot to the south. Under B, under that narrative there, B1, B1B. Is that something that the petitioner recommended? Or is that, and would that be appropriate to include as a special limitation?
Can you point that out to me again?
On page 22 of the packet, talking about, under B1B, have a minimal impact on transportation, it states, "Any entryway to the property will be through the adjacent lot to the south", which is accessible from South Wanita Loop and is the closest accessible lot to the Old Glen Highway off Wanita Loop.
Through the chair, I'm, you should ask the applicant about that. It was my understanding that they were going to have access off of North Wanita Loop for the parking lot that's on that parcel.
Okay, thank you. One last question is, the landscaping around the parking lot in the area, the lot that's being rezoned, adjacent to the residential, is that requirement to be a buffer landscaping? Or there's also an option for visual landscaping plus fencing, right?
The B3 landscaping requirement requires buffer landscaping along each lot line adjoining a residential district.
There's not an option for visual enhancement plus fence screening?
Through the chair, I think what you're thinking of is the screening landscape requirement says that a decorative wood fence can be in lieu of 10 feet of the required 30 feet. So that's for screening landscape. What's required in B3 adjacent to residential is buffer, and buffer is 10 feet.
Without any screening then?
Without a required fence.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions from staff? To staff?
All right. So the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings is, persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. A, petitioners, including all his/her representatives, 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. B, representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, 5 minutes. And if you are representing a group, please clearly state so in the very beginning. And individuals, 3 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Five, any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. May we hear from the petitioner's representative, please?
Could you please come forward to the microphone, please, so the secretary may record appropriately?
Greg Everly, worked for Rodney P. Kenny Associates in Eagle River, representing Tara Patrica, the petitioner for Piccolino's Restaurant.
All right, thank you very much. Please stay at the podium, we do have a question by a commissioner. Commissioner Mulkey.
Yes, sir, thanks for coming in. On page 33 of the packet, do you have the packet?
I'll go get it.
It's the letter from the transportation planner about the realignment of South Wanita, and I just didn't see that addressed anywhere else. You aware of what their thought, manner, what the plans are and how that's going to fit in?
What are you referring to again?
On page 33, there's the letter from the state transportation planner, and he's talking about the realignment of South Wanita Loop, intersection of Oakland and South Wanita Loop. And South Wanita Loop is, not sure it directly impacts this action today, but just wanted to see how it fits in.
Okay, I guess I'm not familiar with the long-term study for the intersection realignments.
And it doesn't directly impact the track you're talking about, but it does impact that whole shop.
I would say, yeah, the area, but, yeah.
Right, thanks.
Commissioner Spring.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for you, but page 22. Something about the, that issue, if you want me to address that. And it was part of the Eagle River circulation plan that was adopted recently, and the idea was to make, align two intersections along Old Glen Highway between North Eagle River Access Road and Eagle River Loop Road in order to facilitate traffic entering and exiting the, so you know all about that? Okay. It does look like, okay, sorry about that. Well, it wasn't, they didn't detail the alignment, they specifically didn't put in detail like that. But it would align though with Eleanor, I think, across there, which is north of the South Wanita. So it would require that, probably would have to take some of that parcel in order to make it line up a little bit, yeah. But maybe it won't happen, so, you know, that's a possibility. But I have, do you have a couple of questions about, the one I referred to earlier to staff regarding the entry to the property from, will be from the south, which would be South Wanita?
That was my understanding of the preference, yes.
So you don't need an access from North Wanita?
No, you'd come in across through the parking lot, existing parking lot.
Okay. And second, the parking, the new, the other lot, the new lot that's going to be rezoned is adjacent to residential property and it's about, it looks like from the aerial that property's about five feet from the property line there.
It's about what?
The residential house to the, my direction's mixed up, to the east of the rezoned property is residential, and it's about five feet from the property line, which would be, means that it'd be, it looks like it's really close to the property line, where the parking, new parking lot would be, perhaps maybe only five feet setback.
There was a parking lot presented to you that you-
No, I did not see a parking lot. My understanding, though, and you can maybe clarify this, is that that lot will be developed as a parking lot.
Yes, I think that's the preference.
Right. And the parking lot will then be next to residential house, which would be about five feet. And there's a requirement, staff said that there's, for a buffer landscaping there, which is 10-foot, and I believe the trees or conifers or whatever would be 10 feet apart. My experience is that if the parking lot is oriented with stalls facing towards the east, that buffer landscaping is not going to cut out any of the headlights from the park, the cars, and they're going to be shining into the windows of the house that are right next to it. And it seems like the, for the benefit of the property owner adjacent to that, that a fencing, which would screen the lights from headlights, would be really beneficial to them.
Yeah, that sounds likely, that sounds like a good idea. I think the idea was to drive back to the east and park to the sides, but you'd certainly be shining your lights that way, trying to find a place to park.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. You have reserved 10 minutes for your rebuttal.
Do I need to sit here?
No, you may sit down. Is there anyone, if anyone wishes to testify on this case, would you please come forward at this time? Please come forward.
I'm that property.
All right, thank you very much. Could you please state your name for the record?
Kerwin Fairbanks.
I'm Jennifer Fairbanks.
And, yeah, this is, first of all, there was a forest there, you know, and I've reached out to these folks several times to communicate with them, you know, what their intentions and stuff. I've gave a business card directly to the owner's husband, and I've had zero communication with them. Not the best neighbors, you know, I have listened to vicious clanking and this and that. And when they cleared that entire lot, you know, a portion of that land is State of Alaska, there's some agreement there with them and N-Star, where N-Star's got a well on that lot, you know, and they cleared all them trees, their property or not, and the property that isn't theirs on the State of Alaska, all the trees were left behind. Now, you can't just replace 40-foot trees. So we had a really nice buffer between our property, you know, and the Old Glen Highway, which has completely been removed. Mr. Spring brought up some very good points, you know, that we obviously want to address. A 15-foot buffer, don't think it's of much use of it at all. We made a, my second time doing this, we did, you know, was involved with the rezoning of across the street from Wanita, and I think we made a mistake there on doing that. You know, that whole plan's kind of gone kaput, you know, the guy foreclosed and now that land's still sitting there, you know, and I'm sure someone's going to come in and try to rezone it again, try to remove some of those limitations that we put on there. One of them being was the access on North Wanita Loop. Without that realignment, you know, with Eleanor being here and North Wanita here and South Wanita here, and I think it's Mercy over here or over here, you know, all those streets, none of them line up, and it is a major issue between 5:00 and 7:00 o'clock every day. Now, with any traffic coming in for dinner at about the same time that everybody's wanting, it's really going to exaggerate that problem that's already there. Trying to make a left-hand turn off Wanita to go south is next to impossible, you know, during that timeframe. And those are things that hopefully are going to be addressed. The peninsula of residential lots kind of got left there when they rezoned across the street. So there was, I think it was eight lots that they rezoned to B3 that were R1. And looking back at it, and the buffer that the State of Alaska put there for those residential lots, it would have been probably best used if it all would have stayed residential, because it would have brought a lot less traffic down there, and it would have left a nice buffer between the Old Glen Highway and those lots. Unfortunately, that was rezoned to B3, and so now we're looking at this one little peninsula. This rezoning's going to go through, we'd just really like to see a lot larger buffer than 15 feet there, and some screening. Headlight, they're actually talking about raising the parking lot up to the level. I spoke with the one owner, and they're wanting to raise that up to that level, and that will bring the headlights up to our window level.
All right, your time has expired, but there are some questions from commissioners in the queue, so if you would just stay put, please. Commissioner Mulkey.
I think we got your point about additional buffer, screening. Was there some more point you wanted to make about the, another point about the parking lot level, or was there any more points you needed to make?
You know, if there was sufficient screening and landscaping done there, and we're not talking four-foot, you know, trees, I mean, some real trees.
You want a serious buffer and screening?
Yeah, a serious buffer and some screening. The one other concernage would be drainage, you know, how they're going to drain that water, you know? If it's going to drain onto my lot, is it going to drain on the North Wanita or out towards the Old Glen? That's my main concern, is just trying to, I don't believe that, well, I do believe that my property value will be affected dramatically, you know, if the right situation is not put in place there.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Commissioner Parks.
Just one quick question. When you talk about screening, are you talking about a fence? Is that what you would like to see put up there?
Yeah, that, in addition to landscaping, I mean, just a fence by itself, I don't think is very attractive, you know, from people driving by on the Old Glen or, you know, for myself. But, you know, to have, you know, a combination of the two.
Okay, generally what happens, fences are put on property lines, buffers are put on the property that's adjacent to it, and that's something that, I'm just trying to get an idea what your mindset is.
Yeah, no, I would have to, you know, do some, you know, stuff on my end too, you know, on my side of the fence, I guess. Because like you said, right, the fence is probably going to go there, and then the landscaping would be on the inside of that. But, you know, I'd still think with the headlight issue, I believe that's the only way, and then, you know, the landscaping's just going to make it look a little nicer.
Okay, thank you.
And those trees, you know, ultimately will overgrow the fence.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I heard you say 15 feet of buffer, and I just wanted to clarify, what I think the code says for buffer landscaping is 10 feet, and I just, I want you to be aware of what the minimum code requirement is.
That's, I believe it's 15-foot on the rear. Now, whether or not that's a rear or a side, I guess I don't know. But, yeah, I think it did say 15 feet on the rear, 10 feet on the sides. So I don't know if that is a rear or a side, that's a very good point. Yeah, I'd be- Um, yeah, I'd be, you know, more like what we did with the other property. I believe it was close to 25 feet or more.
And when you're talking about rezoning the other property, you're talking about the lots, uh, to, to the north of North Waneda or?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and Madam Chair, at some point I'd like staff to, to maybe resolve with some certainty what the, what the requirement, what actually is 10 or 15 feet, if now's the appropriate time.
All right. Um, Ms. Iverson?
The requirement in B3 is buffer landscaping along a lot line that adjoins a residential district. Buffer landscaping is 10 feet on average.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. Is that consistent with the new Title 21?
Madam Chair, I believe buffer landscaping is, I want to say 15 feet. I believe it's wider in the new Title 21, but I don't have that with me today.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ferguson?
I just have one question. Your house, uh, is on North Waneda Loop, right?
That is correct.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand on my drawing. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Dean?
Uh, through the chair. Um, the lots to the north of North Waneda Loop, there are seven lots that were rezoned with a special limitation, and, uh, you said you were involved in that process. What were the special limitations that you placed on those lots? Do you remember?
Um, a lot of it involved, um, drive-through businesses, um, car lots, um, garages, stuff. And we really, and, and kind of a key thing was, was keeping the access off of North Waneda. The access was going to come from, um, the north or from the Old Glen on accesses that were already available. Um, but garages, um, you know, I think there was adult stores. I mean, it was a pretty significant list.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Parks?
Just one quick question. There is a commercial building, it looks like a commercial building, I'm not familiar with this, that looks, uh, like it runs, uh, north and south long, like an L-shaped building. Is that built on the property line?
Yeah, it's, uh, very, very close to the property line. Uh, my, yeah, it's close.
So if, if you put a fence in there, that, that fence would actually be probably right along that building edge or close to it?
Um, I have a six-foot fence there now, and, um, I would say, I believe it's, and, and my fence is probably about two feet onto my property, so I'm going to guess that it's, um, maybe eight to 10 feet of sloped, um, property.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Spring?
Uh, yeah, there's, what do you think about, um, the adequacy of replacing the, like, buffer landscape requirement with the screening landscaping? And screening landscaping requires that, um, there'd be a 30-foot wide landscape, but you can reduce it down to 20 foot with a seven-foot fence. And it has two rows of, um, this, um, conifers, I believe, um, evergreen trees along there, uh, and other shrubs and whatever. Would that be sufficient, you think, to try to, uh, screen the parking lots to the house, your house?
Um, I think I would, do we have the inform, I know this, I, I don't recall what the, uh, buffer zone that we put on the property to the north of North Waneda that was rezoned in '05, but I think something similar to that. I believe it was 25 feet. Um, but that's really close, you know, I mean, to do a double row with a fence, um, would be getting, you know, I, I understand that more than likely it's going to get rezoned no matter what I think about this, but we're trying to, uh, work with everyone, I guess. Um, so 25 feet, I think, would be better, but, you know, I kind of have a feeling that's probably where their dumpster is going to be and a few other things, you know, that they don't necessarily want out front, but, um, it would be nice to have a little bit larger buffer there. You, you know, like, going back, I don't know how large that buffer that the State of Alaska put there, but it's pretty significant, so, I mean, we're already, 25-foot is a fraction of what was originally put there. I guess I walked in here thinking 40 feet, you know, but.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Yes.
All right. Is there anyone else here who wishes to testify? Would you please come forward at this time? Anyone else at all? All right. The petitioner's representative has reserved, uh, his entire 10 minutes. Um, would you like to come forward?
Uh, I guess what I'd say is, uh, the, um, I've never discussed this with the owner, any contentions with neighbors, so this is new to me. Uh, I don't think they want to try and make problems with their neighbors, but, uh, I think they're going to do what the law allows them to do for whatever zoning they've got.
Do you have any other comments you'd like to make?
I guess not.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Mulkey?
Did you have a comment to the petitioner?
Commissioner Spring mentioned that the screening buffer, which would bring, what was it, 25 feet?
Madam Chair, through the chair, um, screening requirements, and I might refer to staff if I'm wrong, um, requires 30 foot without a fence, and it can be reduced to 20 foot with a seven-foot fence.
With 20 foot with a fence, so you're going to lose four parking spaces, maybe depending on how, you think the owner would be amenable to a restriction like that?
Uh, I think they would take whatever they can get, I don't know. I have not discussed it with them. They want as much parking as they can get, I think.
Yeah, I've tried to find a parking space there many times myself, at a park across the street.
That's not something I've discussed with them.
Uh, Commissioner Robinson?
Um, since we're talking dimensions here, can you, can you, can you tell me the dimensions of Lot 4?
Hmm, I forget. I haven't looked at this for a while, and I'm getting older and I forget stuff.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just sort of eyeballing the scale, and if I'm looking at 40 feet, I'm, I'm guessing that that's about half the lot of Lot 4. Is that?
Lot 4 is the one right next to the big one, isn't it? Uh, Lot 4 is the one that comes to the, what page are you looking at?
Um, uh, I, I'm looking at page 27. There's a scale on there.
Okay, yeah. Let's see, quarter acre, uh, about 10,000 feet. I'd say it's about, uh, looks like about three to one. Uh, looks like about 70 feet or so, just looking at the scale. Wide, you said?
Yeah, I was, I was just trying to understand what 40 feet of, um, buffer would look like on that lot.
Oh, yeah, on the, on the, uh, west, east side.
And I just want to be clear, that there are three lots that we're talking about here, right? The, the lot that fronts the Old Glen is, is a DOT lot, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's not proposed to be incorporated into any sort of parking lot?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I, I guess I do want to make a comment, too. There was a drainage plan that would take the drainage, uh, conceptual, uh, west on North Waneda Loop to the Old Glen drainage, and it would be treated like through grasslands properly. Likely they will hire us to design it for them if they get a go-ahead and can easily do everything right.
Um, I don't see any other questions in the queue. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
The public hearing is now closed. What is the wish of the commission? Commissioner Mulkey?
Madam Chair, case number 2013018, I move to approve the request to rezone approximately .42 acres. R1A, single-family residential, .84 from B3 SL, general business with special limitation to B3 general business. Uh, would like to propose, uh, make a recommendation that we add the screening buffer, what's the correct terminology, Stafford, Commissioner Spring, the screen buffer requirement, and they would have their option of?
Uh, reference would be 2145, um, 125, um, C3 for the screening.
So move to approve with that, uh, recommendation, with that, that special limitation or restriction, whatever it would be.
And if you could state what that is so that we all know?
That is the screening requirements, landscape screening requirements.
Right. I, I, I understand that, but what the amount is?
The main provisions include a 20, a 30-foot buffer, um, which can be reduced to 20-foot if a seven-foot fence is required. Perhaps it'd be, um, with a double row of, um, evergreens spaced 10-foot apart in each row. Uh, might be worthwhile to, um, uh, seek a fencing in, specifically in this case, rather than the 30-foot, uh, buffer without a fence, and make specifically, uh, specify 20-foot with a seven-foot fence. Even with a 30-foot buffer and the screening, I think it would be, uh, some headlight interference with, uh, residential use, so it might be better to restrict the options there and just go with the 20-foot, um, buffer with a seven-foot fence.
All right. Thank you. Um, Ms. Iverson, you're in the queue.
Uh, thank, thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to ask that suggested it, the commission may want to specify exactly where the screening is required, for instance, adjacent to residential. And that way, uh, the one lot that is the DOT lot that isn't next to residential would not have any screening requirement on it. Um, it would just be the lots that abut the residential district.
I believe that's what it specifies actually in it, is between the B3 and the residential, correct? But we can add that for specificity?
That's what I understood.
I have no problem with that alone, uh, the, adjacent to the residential property.
Uh, Commissioner Robinson?
I was just going to say, Madam Chair, I think it would be a lot cleaner to, to just move a main motion that, to, to approve the rezone and to deal with this as a separate, a separate amendment. Um, you know, that said, I just would add that I, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with, uh, adding 20 feet on, on there. I'm, I'm sensitive to, um, the property owner and certainly believe that if there's a parking lot involved and, and headlights, there should be a fence. But it's a rather small lot. We've identified the lot in the long-range plan. I'm prepared to support the, the rezone, but I, I think if we're going to get into a lot of, uh, different design, we should deal with them separately as, as, uh, additional amendments to the, to the motion.
Okay. Um, thank you, and we'll deal with this in a moment. Uh, Commissioner Spring, you're still in the queue. Are you?
Yes, Madam Chair. I have a, one other amendment I'd like to propose, if it's appropriate at this time.
Um, we have a motion on, uh, we have a motion on the floor with Commissioner Mulkey, and Ms. Dean, a second from you, and is this simply for the rezone, or are you supporting Commissioner Mulkey's, um, additional condition?
I, I support the additional amendment.
Yeah, I can go with Tyler, and we can clean this up, and I can withdraw and start, we can start over again with just the main motion and then do, talk about the two amendments, if that's cleanest.
All right.
Okay, with that, Commissioner Dean? You, you okay there? All right, so let's withdraw the motion, make a new motion that is just the, the main motion to approve as written.
All right. So that's your motion.
Okay, we'll do that.
All right. And Ms. Dean, is that your second?
Okay, now we'll talk about the two amendments. You want to go first, John, or?
No, 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 we have to vote. Is there any objection?
No. We have two amendments before we do the main motion.
Before we do the main motion. All right. I, I apologize. All right.
All right, you want me to move the buff, uh, screening buffer, John, or you want?
Uh, we are just going to take a little break here, just for one minute.[1512.12] Do we have a motion to amend? May I have a motion to amend?
that would require, in lieu of, instead of buffer landscaping, require screening landscaping between the B3 rezoned property and the residential zoned property to the east off of North Wanita. And furthermore, the, limit the options under the screening landscaping provisions to require a 20-foot wide buffer with a seven-foot screening fence.
I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Iverson.
Madam Chair, I punched in under Ms. Iverson's screen while she's taking notes. Could I just clarify, is this intended to apply to the lot that Pecolino currently exists on? Because there isn't 20 feet of space there yet that is included in this rezone, and it seems from your discussion that you're really discussing only Lot 4. So I just wanted to ask for clarification on that issue. Thank you.
Commissioner Spring.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stafford, thank you for clarifying. I didn't have my lots and numbers right in front of me. So it is, I believe it is Lot 4 that would, this would apply to.
And is the width of that lot 50 feet? For clarification? Or what is the width of that lot?
Madam Chair, the width would be from east to west, so it's much wider than it is deep. But I'm sorry, I don't have a scale, or I don't have a drawing with dimensions I'd be estimating. Maybe 200 feet wide?
It's 50 by, 50 by 200? So Commissioner Spring, my question to you is, what percentage of the lot would be taken up by your amendment?
Madam Chair, the amendment would only change the buffer landscaping by 10 feet, and which would, in essence, reduce the amount of parking by two parking spaces. The percentage looks like it would be an almost insignificant amount.
Okay. All right. Is there a second to the motion? To the amendment? You have to touch your, you have to make a motion.
Yeah, oh, like that?
He doesn't have the motion box on your screen? Okay, Commissioner Parks. Okay, you're making the motion. All right, okay. And it's seconded by Commissioner Mulcahy. We'll make sure you get credit on Granicas. All right. Is there further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Robinson.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just would echo what I said earlier. I'm comfortable with the fence, but I'm not comfortable with the width. I think we have standards for developing parking and adjacent to residential in the code. Again, while I'm sensitive to the property owner, I would propose to do that with a fence. I'll not be supporting this motion.
All right. Thank you. I'm having a little problem. Commissioner Mulcahy.
Yeah, just real quick. So you're talking just Lot 4, and as John said, it's just the difference between the 20-foot and 30-foot, no, I'm sorry, between the 10-foot and the 20-foot. So it's just that 10-foot swath across approximately 70, 75 feet, just that, between the existing mini-mall along that, dividing between the B3 and the residential, so.
That is correct. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the motion? Would you please use your machines? This is the amendment. To add a 30-feet buffer with, or a 20-feet width buffer with a seven-foot fence. Is that correct? Commissioner Spring.
Madam Chair, that's correct.
All right. According to 21.45.125C3. All right. Please use your machines. We can't. Okay. Stop that. All right. Is that everyone? One, two, three, four, five, six, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We need one more. Who's not voting? Commissioner Spring. His machine is not working. I'm assuming you're voting for the motion.
Madam Chair, I'm voting for the motion.
All right. Thank you very much. There we go. That vote is four to three, and therefore, the motion fails. All right. All right. Do we have another amendment before we vote? Four to three, but we have to have five. We have to have five. Okay. The majority does not always roll. It has to be a supermajority. All right. Commissioner Parks.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we put a restriction of a seven-foot fence with a 10-foot buffer.
May we have, do we have a second? We have a second by Tyler Robinson. Is there any objection to this motion? Commissioner Robinson.
Just to clarify, I believe the intent is to provide that along the Lot 4, where Lot 4 is adjacent to the residential property.
Yes. That is the motion. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. We are now back to the main motion for the rezone in Case 2013-018, rezoning to B3 General Business District 1.25 acres. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, no, I'm not considering that at this time.
All right. Thank you very much.
I apologize if I didn't.
Commissioner Mulcahy.
Move to approve with the amendment.
All right. Thank you very much. It's seconded by Ms. Dean. Is there any objection to the motion? All right. Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. That rezone is approved. Thank you all very much. We are now moving on to Case S11970. Commissioner Robinson, you're in the queue.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could just add, I would like to add a couple of findings to the motion.
Ah, thank you.
I supported this rezoning. It is consistent with the Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan that identifies that area as commercial. It's also very much a cleanup rezoning that handles a sort of small strip of low-density residential surrounded by commercial. And I do believe that the addition of a fence will provide some protection to the property owner in addition to the buffer landscaping that's required in the code. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Robinson. Any other findings of fact? All right. Moving on to Case S11970-1, Ekutna Inc., the request is a plat for review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Total area 388.1 acres. May we have the staff? Well, first of all, let me just say, the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is, after the presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all his/her representatives, a total of 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. B, representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, five minutes. If you are representing a group, please identify that in the very beginning of your comments. C, individuals, three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. May I have the staff report? Mr. Whitfield, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This plenary plat is a request for subdivision of one tract of land into 71 lots and five tracts of land with a variance from AMC 2180-300D design standards. Lot dimensions, the lot width of the lot shall be at least one-third to lot depth of the lot. This plat is proposed as a cluster housing development governed by AMC 2150-210, and the petitioner is requesting a 60-month approval for this plenary plat and is proposing three phases, A, B, and C, beginning in the spring of 2013. The petition site is zone PC Plan Community District. This site is governed by the Ekutna Powder Reserve Track 48 Master Plan approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 13, 2007, as AO 2007-6. The master plan shows the petition site as being zoned PR MF3 Powder Reserve High Density Residential District. The property is located in Eagle River, north of Ekutna Park Drive and west of the Glen Highway. Class C wetlands are found primarily in the lower-lying areas of the southeast section of the subdivision with Fire Creek located to the east and north. The Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan shows the areas being residential with a density of 16 to 30 dwelling units per acre. The Ekutna Powder Reserve Track 48 Master Plan shows this site as being suitable for a residential density of up to 17 DUA. Density for this proposed subdivision is about 6 dwelling units per acre. Access to the site is via Ekutna Park Drive, which is located southwest of the petition site. Streets within the subdivision will be publicly dedicated 60-foot wide rights-of-way, built to a 33-foot back-of-curb-to-back-of-curb wide municipal standard with five-foot separated sidewalks on both sides of the street. COSO Way will extend to the northwest boundary of the subdivision, providing a future connection to the neighboring property. Temporary turnaround will be provided under the roadway, until the roadway is extended to the southeast. Acre Circle extends 600 feet to a cul-de-sac, which provides a trail connection to the Ekutna Water Easement. The area-wide trails plan shows a proposed paved multi-use trail along the north side of Ekutna Park Drive, as well as a trail linked from the area to proposed paved and unpaved trails along both sides of Fire Creek. Staff is recommending a dedication of a pedestrian access from COSO Way to Fire Creek, possibly in the area between Lots 28 and 29, to avoid the wetlands. And a walkway be constructed south of acre circles to connect to the Ekutna Water Utility Easement. I'd like to address the cluster housing site plan standards. The subdivision is proposed as a cluster housing, or cluster plat development, which is governed by the standards established in AMC 2150-210. Cluster housing is intended to provide a development option particularly suited to tracts of land that include marginal areas. Marginal areas include wetlands, steep slopes, or creeks. Proposed development clusters, the dwelling units on the more developable portions of the property, and preserves the more steeply sloped portions and critical wetlands as undisturbed open space. The municipality provides for an alternative development technique to achieve community goals such as open space, preservation of water quality, reduction of the erosion, and enhancement of sediment control. The proposed development is within, is within the intent of the cluster housing development. I'll address each section of the cluster housing site plan separately. AMC 2150-210C, only one principal structure is allowed per lot. The subdivision is proposed for 71 single-family detached dwelling units, so this standard is met. Permitted density in the PR MF3 district is 17 dwelling units per acre. Proposed density for this is 6 dwelling units per acre, so that standard is met. Minimum size of cluster housing development in the PR MF district is not defined by AMC 2150-210. However, the PR MF3 district is very similar to the existing R4 district, which requires minimum site area of one acre, so this standard appears to be met. AMC 2150-210E, maximum lot coverage is 40%. This standard will be reviewed during the building permit process. AMC 2150-210F, minimum yard requirements in the PR MF district cluster plat, front yard shall be 10 feet, side yard will be 5 feet, the rear yard will be 10 feet. This standard will be met during the building permit process. AMC 2150-210G, common open space, at least 30% of the site shall be common open space as defined in our 2135. Environmentally sensitive features may be included in the computation for open space. Petitioner is required to retain 2,000, or, I'm sorry, 206,291 square feet of this site for common open space. Petitioner is providing 238,489 square feet with this particular plan, so staff finds that standard to be met. Common usable open space of the common open space, at least 600 square feet per dwelling unit, shall be provided as common usable open space within the cluster housing subdivision. The petitioner is required to retain 39,600 square feet for common usable open space. Site plan provided shows 41,878 square feet being retained as common usable open space, so staff finds that standard to be met. Along with this request is a variance. A variance is requested from AMC 2180-300D design standards. Lot dimensions, the lot width shall be at least one-third to lot depth for all lots within the subdivision. There are four standards that are required under a variance request, and I'll address each one separately. AMC 2150-210F, minimum yard requirements in the PR MF district cluster plat, front yard shall be 10 feet, side yard will be 5 feet, the rear yard will be 10 feet. This standard will be met during the building permit process. AMC 2150-210G, common open space. At least 30% of the site shall be common open space as defined in our 2135. Environmentally sensitive features may be included in the computation for open space. Petitioner is required to retain 2,000, or, I'm sorry, 206,291 square feet of this site for common open space. Petitioner is providing 238,489 square feet with this particular plan, so staff finds that standard to be met. Common usable open space of the common open space, at least 600 square feet per dwelling unit, shall be provided as common usable open space within the cluster housing subdivision. The petitioner is required to retain 39,600 square feet for common usable open space. Site plan provided shows 41,878 square feet being retained as common usable open space, so staff finds that standard to be met. Along with this request is a variance. A variance is requested from AMC 2180-300D, design standards, lot dimensions, the lot width shall be at least one-third to lot depth. For all lots within the subdivision, there are four standards that are required under a variance request, and I'll address each one separately. Standard number one, staff finds this standard to be met. There are special conditions that exist in this property that are unique. The topography of this petition site dictates the location of the roadways. The location of the roadways in turn affects the layout of the lots. In this situation, the topography offers an opportunity to provide an economically-sized width of lot while also providing the larger square footage lots. Standard number two, staff finds this standard to be met. The granting of this variance would not be detrimental to the public welfare or interest to other property in the area. This subdivision will provide an added benefit to the homebuyer by creating affordable narrow lots with large backyard areas that promote outdoor living activities. Standard number three, staff finds this standard to be met. Granting of this requested variance will not have the effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations. Design of this site creates an opportunity to provide a high-quality living experience while at the same time meeting the goals of the comprehensive plan of protecting the natural amenities and scenic vistas of the surrounding area. Standard number four, staff finds this standard to be met. Undo hardship would result for the petitioner from the strict compliance of the subdivision regulation. Strict compliance would only serve to make the lot smaller and less attractive and usable to future homeowners. That being said, staff would like to recommend approval of this request, subject to standards, or, I'm sorry, conditions 1 through 19 on pages 13, 14, and 15 of your staff packet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions at staff? Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you. I have a map that talks, it abbreviates CUOS, which I imagine that's the common usable open space, is what that's depicting?
Through the chair, Mr. Robinson, I think you are correct, yes.
So, just since it is common usable open space, could you tell me how people are supposed to access that space?
Through the chair, Mr. Robinson, can I ask you which map you're referring to?
I'm, I'm-
Are you looking at the-
The big one. This one.
Okay. I've got an eight-and-a-half by 11, so I apologize.
Through the chair, Mr. Robinson, it appears that the residents could access through the cul-de-sac at Acre Circle, as well as basically the intersection of COSO and Acres. There's some area there dedicated to the, to the common usable open space as well.
Commissioner Robinson, are there not four areas here that access the common open space as well?
I see two, but I guess I could, you know, ask that we ask the same question of the developer. I just, I just wanted to, you know, ask, ask staff. I suppose in the code, it doesn't specifically define how that usable open space is accessed. There are no specific standards to that effect. Is that correct?
There, there are no specific standards as how, how it's to be used. There are standards of what is inclusive of common usable open space. They can include roads. They have to be a minimum width, things of that sort, but, but not how, yeah, not how they're accessed.
Okay. I just, I just, if there's, I just want to make sure that if we're actually identifying those, that there's a way for people to, to meet those areas. And if it's not, you know, really intended to be used, it's just a way to approve it on a, on a plan, then I'm, then I'm not sure we meet the standards of the, of the cluster, cluster subdivision. So I just, I'll ask the petitioner to sort of flush that out for me a little bit.
Through the chair, Mr. Robinson, I think you have a very good point, and I, I think with the, the suggested condition of providing a trail easement through possibly lots 28 and 29, that'll provide an opportunity to, to get that access to that common usable open space to the, would be the north.
Okay.
Potentially.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes. On page five of our packet, under plat notes, you mentioned twice, property owners or utilities shall now do something. I, I guess I understand property owners, but I don't know if I understand utilities. Who is supposed to manage and make sure that the utilities don't, or utilities behave in accordance with these plat notes? I mean, the applicant can't control the utilities. And so I, I just, my question is, why, why is the note on there?
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson, these are pretty standard plat notes that come along with every plating action and recommended by the private development section, and I, I think honestly, it's just to protect the rights of the utility.
To protect the rights of the utility?
That's correct. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking me here. These are standard plat notes that come along with every plat recommended by private development.
On page 15, you, you repeat them on the, on the recommendations.
That's correct. I carried them over to, to the recommendations.
Commissioner Ferguson, maybe I could help you out here a little bit? In terms of, frequently, when the utilities come in, particularly the shallow, shallower utilities, they are not as careful as they should be about the grade for when they install them, and sometimes that affects drainage issues. And so I think what the intent is, is it's the responsibility of the private developer to make sure that when these shallow utilities go in, that they do not raise or lower or regrade the property. In the Eagle River area, the shallow utilities are, are placed on the front of the lot.
Okay.
Commissioner Spring.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page 37 of the packet, there's a list of sample elevations of the homes, and I think there's something like six of them. And there's a description of some of the design features that are proposed to be put in there on the houses, and use of different types of paint, et cetera. You see that there? My question is, I, I don't see anything in the conditions of approval that address this offer by the developer to mix up the facade, the streetscape, a little bit, with different types of housing designs. I mean, they all have garages in front, and, but it looks like the proposal is to at least give some differences in the appearance of each of the houses and different paint colors. Is that, did I miss something in the proposal, in the conditions of approval that would take up this offer and, and make that a fact in the, in the-
Through the chair, Mr. Spring. Unfortunately, in the standards for approval of cluster housing developments, there's nothing that specifically addresses that. However, you know, maybe you'd like to address that with the petitioner and see if they'd be amenable to kind of changing that up a little bit.
I will ask the petitioner about that. It looks like perhaps it might be something that could be included in a covenant, of course, that they have, apparently are required to create. On page, I don't have page, I guess at page 17 on the Ekutna Master Plan that we received the other day. It talks about minimum lot requirements, and I, I'm sure it's, some of the, most of lots are 35 feet. There's some discussion about, from traffic, about lots that are less than 35 feet. I don't understand, I guess, if you could help clarify this. What, where the code specifies that 35 foot is allowed, when it looks like on page 17 that the master plan, which is adopted by ordinance by the Assembly, has minimum lot requirements in this zoning district MF3, specifically tied to this master plan, of 50-foot lot widths, with the exception of cluster housing development, which has to then conform to 2150-210. And I don't see any minimum lot requirements in that section of the code.
That is correct. And I was, what I was going to say is, is this is actually a cluster housing development, which is governed under 2150-210, and there are no specific lot widths for cluster housing developments, with the exception of what traffic is requiring here at 35 feet, and that is to meet the two-fifths rule for driveways and to provide off-street, or, I'm sorry, on-street parking.
Well, then I guess, explain then why it's allowed, 35 foot is allowed when the ordinance and the master plan, which refers to this particular parcel, appears to have a requirement of a minimum lot width of 50 feet with a 6,000-square-foot lot area.
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, may I have just one minute to pull up the cluster housing development standards?
Commissioner Spring, it's my understanding that the cluster housing ordinance allows for narrower lots as long as there is the required open space requirement. This is particularly true in subdivisions, residential subdivisions, where there are wetlands and challenging topography.
Yes, Madam Chair. And I'm, I know that, I've seen lots of cluster housing developments with 35 foot, but I haven't seen it, I just don't understand how that relates to this master plan ordinance, which specifically states that it should be 50 feet. I don't see anything in the cluster housing that specifically allows 35 foot that would override a master plan ordinance. Maybe it's my confusion, and maybe the, maybe the petitioner will clarify it a little bit more for me, but. A second, next question refers also to the master plan on page 18. The section referring to landscaping under this particular zone classification in the master plan calls for landscaping, "All areas not devoted to buildings, structures, drives, streets, off-street parking facilities, usable yard area, or other authorized installations may be planted, and shall be planted with visual enhancement landscaping, as defined in 2145-125 as of May 31, 2006." The landscaping shall be maintained by property owner or designee. In the site plan, I did not see in the, in the open space, the required common open space landscaping that shows that it meets that requirement. And I'm assuming that the map, the, the plenary plat, site plan map that we received, which shows some landscaping, is going to be used as the guide that the municipality will use in order to check whether they meet the requirements for landscaping. Is that correct?
Well, I, I believe that the visual enhancement landscaping requirements would be provided on each lot and, and not the overall site plan. And maybe the petitioner can address what their plan is. I think their plan is to actually retain as much natural vegetation as possible, which is what the municipality would, would like to see.
Through the chair, the, I don't know how to interpret this requirement exactly, but it does look like it would be applied to more than just the individual lots, that it would be applied to all areas not devoted to buildings, structures, drives, walks, off-street parking facilities, usable yard area. That would seem to me to apply to all the tracts that are specified to be common areas, and I don't see that on the site plan. And moreover, as you mentioned, I don't see that on the lots themselves either. There's only a few, in fact, I don't see any landscaping on any of the lots in front. And also refers back to my original question regarding what the petitioner proposed, which was that there'd be large trees planted in front of each of the lots, as well as all those different design configurations and different paint jobs. And my question is, I guess, if this site plan is to be used as a guide, then I don't see that it's going to meet this requirement in the master plan, nor is it going to meet the proposal by, that the, the owner has mentioned that they would have big trees in front of each lot.
So if I could just interrupt here for a minute. Commissioner Spring, normally, the landscaping requirements become part of the covenant's codes and restrictions for the subdivision, and then there is a choice between whether or not the developer installs some, or whether or not the builder installs some, or whether or not the individual homeowner installs some. I can tell you that it's very difficult for the developer and the builder in narrow lot configurations to actually install the landscaping any time prior to the actual construction of the building. So that matter for landscaping, at least on the lots, is usually handled in the covenant's codes and restrictions and is pretty clearly defined, and certainly that would be an appropriate item for an amendment. I think as it relates to vegetation in the cluster non-disturbed areas, I think it's, it's not unusual in cluster housing to, and certainly as far as buyer preference is concerned, to leave as much existing vegetation as possible, particularly since some of this open space is in wetland areas. Commissioner Robinson, did you have a comment or question?
I'm sure I did. On page nine, 13B, there's a comment from Eagle River Street Maintenance, and it talks about snow removal and suburso. I just wondered if staff had a comment on that? I, I don't quite understand. Is the comment pertaining to this particular site plan or future site plans?
Through the chair, Mr. Robinson, my interpretation of that is, is future development. I know that the, the lot widths were a concern of traffic with regards to snow removal as well. With the petitioner modifying the, the lot width to be 35 feet, I believe that the snow storage requirement would be addressed with that, so.
And does, does Eagle River Street Maintenance speak on behalf of suburso?
Through the chair, I do not believe they do, no. Typically, what they'll do is they'll make their own comment and say that suburso would comment further.
But suburso would be responsible for removing snow on this public, once-platted public street? Is that right?
That is correct.
It's not a, it's not a Private Homeowners Association responsibility?
No, no.
And is there a comment specific from suburso that, that is in the packet and addressing this issue?
There is not.
Thank you.
Commissioner Spring.
Just, what is the, it looks like, what's the length of the, no, no, I have to look up and see what the street name is. The street that goes towards the west through phases B and C. Do you happen to know what the length of that is and whether it would meet the cul-de-sac length requirements?
Are you referring to COSO Way?
I guess so.
Yeah, that is, it's not a cul-de-sac. It's actually a right-of-way that will be extended in the future. It's a- be extended in the future. It's a temporary turnaround to be provided there, so they will not have to meet the maximum 600-foot length.
What is, what do you, what is the, is it, enter into the discussion as to whether or not that lot to the east would ever be developed, or is that a relevant question? Because it is owned by, I believe, the Alaska Railroad, and I don't know of any, it's not a clutina land.
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, perhaps the petitioner can address that. I think they're a little bit more aware of what the potential development of that property is, and I believe they, the reason why they did provide for that connection is because there is that, that future plan to develop that property.
Ordinarily, okay, thank you very much.
All right. Are there any other questions of staff? All right. Would the petitioner's representative please come forward then? Please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, planning staff, and concerned members of the public. My name is Tom Drayer, I'm with the S4 Group, and I am representing the Clutina Inc. tonight. With me tonight, for your benefit, I have from Clutina Inc., Jim Arneson and Aaron Elam, and Dave Grunier with Triad Engineering is here to answer any civil engineering questions you may have, and Pat Athie, our wetlands professional, is here to answer, answer any questions relating to wetlands, and Tim Potter with Dal HQM Engineers is here to answer any historical questions you may have related to this development. I would like to reserve five minutes for rebuttal, please. Powder View is a 15-acre site within the PC zoning as regulated per AO 2007-06. AO 2007-06 is the assembly ordinance that approved the Clutina Powder Reserve Track 48 master plan, which encompasses the entire 404-acre site that you see on the second page of the submitted preliminary plat. Powder View is zone PRMF3, which is classified as a high-density residential district per the approved master plan. PRMF3 zoning is similar to Title 21 R4 zoning in character. Powder View is being submitted for approval as a cluster housing subdivision, as per Title 2150-210, which is an allowed type of development as per the master plan, Section 7A. The allowed density in PRMF3 is up to 17 DUAs, or in this area, that would equate to 255 units. And Powder View, as proposed, has a density level of 4.5 DUAs with 71 units. Powder View perfectly complies with the Chugiat Eagle River Comprehensive Plan, the master plan, and Title 21 regulations. Our team has made presentations to the Eagle River Community Council, the Birchwood Community Council, and to a neighbor group that lives adjacent to the northeast corner of the larger track 40A2. At each presentation, we also held question-and-answer sessions for the community. Powder View, as you will agree, has some added amenities in our design you normally do not see in a cluster housing plat. We have responsibly included in our design, amongst other items, fairly large lots for a cluster housing plan, from 4,500 to 8,000 square feet. Deep lots provide plenty of backyard space for large decks, hot tubs, greenhouses, garden areas, barbecues, et cetera. Extra-wide green belts around the perimeter that range from 30 feet to 140 feet in width. We have a beautifully landscaped entry median with large greenbelt landscaping areas on both sides of the entry area. Sidewalks on both sides of the street that are separated from the curb with a five-foot landscaping strip, making for a safer sidewalk where people can walk safely away from opening doors and traffic lanes, and also provides a much more attractive streetscape for the residents. Coving of the front yard setbacks are being provided. Coving is a unique design technique that utilizes variable setbacks for the front of the houses in relation to the streetscape, creating a more visually interesting and pleasing environment. A front setback easement is placed right on the plat, ensuring that each home builder will comply with the coving intent. Many of the lots on the east side of the street have great opportunities for walkout basements, which many homebuyers in Alaska prefer, and a wonderful scenic view across the valley to Fire Creek. Powder View is well-designed with all streets to MOA standards within public right-of-ways, and with public water, sewer, storm drainage, gas, electric, and cable services. Our design and development team has been working together with all the MOA and other applicable reviewing agencies, through both the pre-application conference process and the post-op application conference process, with a successful result of their full approval of the Powder View design. We concur with all the planning department recommendations that are in your packet on pages 13 through 16, and seek your approval for Powder View subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Drayer. Are there questions? Commissioner Mulkey?
Yes, thank you very much. Same question that Mr. Robinson, Commissioner Robinson had earlier about the, not subursa, it was the Eagle River Road Maintenance and the snow removal. Can you address that?
I'm sorry, what exactly was the question?
It was, it's on page nine, I think, and referenced also on page 61. 61 is the letter from the street maintenance, and on page nine, the Eagle River Street Maintenance, it's item number 13, has comments about the snow removal.
About the snow removal? The, the design does comply with the Title 21 regulations as far as street width and, and the width of the driveway in relation to the total width of the, of the lots. I mean, there's, there's more difficulty up there in that area for snow removal situations.
Did you meet with the subursa or the?
No.
The road maintenance? So, I'm reading this comment more as a general comment addressing cluster housing as opposed to a specific one for your specific design. So, I'm not sure they've seen this design. You, to your knowledge, do they have, do you know if they have?
If subursa has seen this particular one? I, I would assume they have. The condition did make it up into the recommendation, so I assume there's a lot of debate on that.
Through the chair, Mr. Mulkey, I can address that question. It is routed to subursa and the street maintenance, so yes, they have seen it, and they, and that's why they had the opportunity to comment.
I, I think that relates back to traffic's requirement or request for a 35-foot wide lot, so that there is adequate snow storage on the lot in relationship to the maximum width of the driveway.
Yes, that is correct. They may have been relating to, there was a few that ended up being just a little under 35, just accidentally, but in the end, we will comply with a 35-foot width. Thank you.
Commissioner Spring, and then Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Drayer, the, the master plan for Clutina Powder Ridge, on page 28, talks about the platting authority for subdivisions, new subdivisions, and this might be something Mr. Potter might go comment on, since I think he has something to do with the master plan. But it says, "The Planning and Zoning Commission shall act as the platting authority for the revised master plan," which is what this is. "Subdivision covenants shall incorporate design standards and be submitted with each plat. Design standards should be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission serving as the platting board as each subdivision is submitted." So, I, my question is, I don't see subdivision covenants in our packet, or maybe I missed it, maybe it's really small. But, is it there?
Yes, but there's a couple of pages missing that somehow we got, one, page one, three, and five, but not two, four, and six, and I actually have a copy here for you.
I'd like to see it. And, second question, if I may, Madam Chair, is regarding the, what kind of vegetation there is currently existing in the tracted-out common areas that you have on the map there?
Sorry, what was the question?
What type of vegetation exists currently?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Common open areas.
The common open areas are fully vegetated with trees. It's pretty thick everywhere. So, there's a few spots up in this area right here where we're going to have to supplement to meet the requirements, but the rest of it's pretty dense.
Okay.
With existing vegetation.
Okay, I should have gone out there and looked at it, I suppose. Then also on page 36 of the master plan, it talks about the Powder Reserve Master Homeowners Association will form a design review committee that will review all proposed developments to ensure appropriate grading, blah, blah, landscaping, architectural variety, colors, textures, and other features. Is that homeowners' association in existence?
Correct, for Powder Ridge, and on page 30, or starting on page 38 of your packet, is the CCNRs that address architectural control. There's a setup of a committee for that, and they deal with siding, roofs, and colors, and structural locations, and things like that.
Did that committee review this, and do they have comments on this?
Has, who reviewed, I'm sorry?
The homeowners' master homeowners' association, have they reviewed this plat, and, as seems to be required under the master plan?
Well, this is going to be, Jim, can you speak to this one?
As commissioners, my name is Jim Arneson, I'm the land manager. Right now, the Powder Ridge Homeowners Association has an architectural control committee, it's controlled by Clutina, and we would be doing the same thing for this particular phase. The master association would take over once the entire development has been finished. This is a large development, so you have a lot of phases, and until all the phases are done, the master association has control of some of this, but when you look at it, Clutina is about the only real entity in the master association, so you're talking to us.
Okay, I appreciate that, but I do, I guess I am confused. What would be left to review once the development's developed? Why was, why is the statement in here, if the homeowners' association will only come into effect once everything's developed? It says here that they're supposed to review landscaping, architectural variety, grading, drainage, blah, blah, blah. Why, I don't understand the intent of this, then, if it's not going to come into effect until after the development's completely done.
No, no, no. Let me restate that. Before any dwelling ever got built, as long as I've been there eight years, we have an architectural control committee, and it has to go through that committee before we give a builder permission to build a home of their choice. So, it's fully active. What I'm saying is, the master association is a, it's kind of like an umbrella, but the umbrella doesn't really have a purpose yet. It controls some of the large undeveloped green areas, and it's in charge of that.
Thank you. I, I'm, I'm too confused on, on that note. I, it sounds like we have a master plan that requires some design guidelines, and in fact, you've submitted the design guidelines as part of your packet. What, what, what requires you to follow those design, design guidelines? Is there, is, there's nothing in the, in the plat or the department recommendations that says you got to file the, the design guidelines? So, where is that requirement that says you've got to follow these design guidelines?
It's in the covenants and restrictions, and if you look at page, there were some pages missing that, in your packet.
The, or, on page 13, I'm sorry, D2?
Yeah, 38 and 39, and, there's some, page 38, you can see the beginning of some of it. Restrictions on use, alienation, and occupancy, and there's some pages missing somehow we missed. Anyway, this is a document that's as thick as this, and it has all kinds of rules and regulations, and we control that. And when everything is finished, then the homeowners get to take over. Like, pretty soon, when Powder Ridge is fully developed, Clutina will step back, the master association will be there, but the homeowners will be governing everything else from that point on. But we govern the initial construction.
And if I can, I think I have a question for staff. I mean, is it true that the requirement in the, in the master site plan, that there be design guidelines on this, on a cluster housing, not in the code itself, but in the master, the, the master plan for the area? I believe that's what Mr. Spring was referring to.
Through the chair, Mr. Robinson, I think you are correct, yes.
So, if that's true, then how do we make sure that this, what is, what is the specific enforcement or requirement? How do you tie them all together as part of this plat? Is it an additional plat note that requires that, or could, since we don't normally handle plats at the Plating Commission, could you help us kind of make sure we just connect the dots on that?
Generally, there would be a note on the plat that would be that this is subject to the covenant's codes and restrictions of the subdivision, and within the covenant's codes and restrictions are the design guidelines. So, I'm not quite sure I understand what your question is.
My question is, there's a difference here between just having design guidelines because a developer would like them to have a good development. There's actually a requirement in the, in the master plan to have them, and I just want to make sure that we're approving something that makes sure that they acknowledge that they have them. And I, I think that's what Mr. Spring was, was driving at. But I don't, I don't see any connect, I see them, you know, submitted, I see the picture, I see some sample pictures, but I don't see the connection back, and that's what I'm, you know, that, that's, I would like to see some, some connection. But I don't know how to do it, and I don't want to, I don't want to make it up as I go, so I'd look to staff for that, for that.
Mr. Whitfield, isn't it true that the recording of, first of all, that the covenant's codes and restrictions are submitted to the planning department and are reviewed and approved as part of the final plat?
Mr. O'Ferney, Mary, you are correct. They are submitted to the planning department, reviewed prior to recording of the final plat. If the commission is amenable to adding a plat note addressing the covenant's codes and restrictions, then that's certainly fine with staff.
Okay, thank you, and I had a, another question. I, if you could address the question that I had earlier about the, the common open space and how, how residents would access that usable common open space?
We have an access at multiple points. One would be, of course, off of the entry area there into that zone. Between lots 64 and 63, there'll be an access route there. And then through the end of, I guess it's listed as a circle, to the, see, to the southeast, there's access to the east and to the west off of the end of that cul-de-sac. And keeping on going around here, there's access between lot 46 and 47, and about in the middle, we have access between lot 38 and 39. And there's access between lot 28 and 29, which I think staff has asked me to make sure that that, the narrowest point there is 10 feet for a future trail. And And then we have access, pretty tight up there on that very western border there.
Okay, great, so those breaks are intended to provide access, is what, is it the breaks in the lots?
Yeah, and there's a break between lots seven and eight.
Okay, thank you. Final question, Madam Chair, if I could, that there's, there's a delineation of a wetland on, you know, kind of this area, could you talk a little bit about the strategy on how you're addressing that, you know, that wetland, what, how you're intending to develop that?
Well, there's about two, it's 2.2 acres there of Class C developed wetland, and we have to pay the Great Land Trust, at least in 2012, it was nineteen thousand five hundred dollars per acre for the area that we're going to be built, that we're going to build on here, so about fifty thousand dollars. I'm not sure what the 2013 fee is going to be, but I'm sure it won't be less than that because it usually goes up. And then the Great Land Trust uses that money to buy some land that they really want.
Great.
Maybe an area that's not classified as a Class A wetland, but they'd rather have it saved, say, as a Class A wetland.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
All right, I don't see any other questions in the queue. You have five minutes and forty-two seconds left for your rebuttal. Is there anyone here who wishes to testify from the public? Please come forward at this time.
All right, my name is Jill Flanders.
If you would wait just one minute, we're having a few little technical difficulties. Thank you. All right, would you please clearly state your name for the record?
My name is Jill Flanders Crosby, and I am speaking as an individual, although I am also the acting chair of the Birchwood Community Council, but I'll be very clear, I'm not speaking for the community council, other than to let you know that I did get a report from our Suburso representative, and they did receive the information on this plat, they were aware of it, but he never told me whether they approved it or not, so I will clarify that for you. As a long-term member of this community since 1974, it is a space that is very intimate and dear to my presence in Alaska. You can never stop change, why should you stop change, but let's at least try and impact it positively. And while I do not necessarily oppose this development, I do have to bring forward to the public record the issues of the road development, and I have before you the original PC planning for this entire track forty A. There's something that's very critical to point out in that, and this shows the major trails and roads, and you see that right here, there was an original proposed road coming out through these two areas that are now being developed immediately, and originally, this was supposed to be number eight in line for this being number one, which by now closing this off, and there is no guarantee that there will be access through here, although I understand possibly there will be, that then chokes this one thousand five hundred and fifty homes all out over Terrace, which is this road right here, crossing the Acclutna Water Pipeline, which is listed as a major trail, but once you cross all that traffic over there, it is no longer a trail unless you have separated grade accesses. Terrace is a very steep drive down, I oftentimes hear this described as Terrace because there's an incline, a flat, an incline in the flat, but there's no flat on that road. Terrace culminates down here, right across from the existing Powder Ridge, right here, and you have very little space in between turning left onto Terrace before you get onto the highway, so once you have so many cars coming down this road, it's going to be tricky. Yes, 50% buildout, they're supposed to reevaluate, even at 50% buildout, that's a lot coming down, choking the intersection, getting onto the highway, plus when Terrace was built, it choked off the Fire Creek, Carroll Creek access coming across the highway, which is why you are now pooled there in a pond, and the wetlands have become even more exa, or the pooling, the ponding has become even more exaggerated, along with the beavers moving up. I just have to be on the record for the potential problems with that access.
All right, thank you very much. I don't see any questions in the queue at this time. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Anyone else at all? Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? All right, seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is closed, we can have the petitioner's representative rebuttal. Please come forward. You have five minutes and forty-five seconds. That's fine, six. All right, please come, please begin.
Tim Potter with Dallas Cam, just in a quick response to the testimony that you just heard, on the issue of, see if I can actually get this into the camera view, of the area that was talked about with the road coming down through this portion of the property. It is a dashed red line, which did indicate it as a proposed future road. That section of road was put on there as a dashed line, not to infer that it would ever be constructed, but that it was being considered. Since that time, in looking at it, with the grades that are involved, the wetlands with the stream crossing, the Acclutna Water Pipeline, and the power lines and utilities that are in this corridor, we've deemed that it's likely going to be just a trail, not a road, because not only would it be very expensive, it would be very difficult. This road connection was not incorporated into the traffic impact analysis that analyzed all this originally. There is a connection down at the other end, which, as part of the build-out of the project, that is a required connection to Acclutna Parkway. So that means Acclutna Parkway, and that connection would be in place, so not all the traffic has to go out to Terrace Drive. And that is built into the sequencing of what you have to do at 50% buildout versus full buildout, both to Terrace Lane, signalization out at Terrace Lane, the off-ramp, and Acclutna Parkway. So I understand that, and we thought it might look like a great entry into the project area, it's just infeasible because of all the other issues that are associated with it, but it was not dependent upon as a basis for the TIA. I thought that was important to note.
Commissioner Spring, well, wait, let's just have you finish your, well, actually, just, we'll stop, if you'll stop, stop the clock for the question. All right, okay, Commissioner Spring, did you want to ask your question now?
Sure, I guess so, I wasn't sure if you were finished or not with your rebuttal, but I have a question regarding the road connection there, and you have basically two cul-de-sacs in this subdivision, and you have one, of course, that's stubbed out, and ordinarily, stubbing out makes sense to make connections to other developments, but in this case, the stub out really isn't going to serve any real use, as far as I can tell, with the adjacent property. It's not a, it's not just, only I could see maybe six houses would be utilizing that from the property, I believe the railroad owns on the other side. And tell me what you, I know you're up to date on what's happening with a lot of the development plans, and my understanding was that the railroad had no intention of developing that or even trading that property for the foreseeable future, and is it, makes sense, though, to assume that that's going to be developed and that that will not end up being a cul-de-sac?
You know, I'm going to say something, and I don't mean to insult anybody, but I'm pretty sure that if we would have made it a cul-de-sac, somebody would have said, what about the continuity with the adjacent property for future development? So damned if you do and damned if you don't, but, and that was a big discussion with the staff and internally, and the decision was made that, no, we don't know what the railroad's going to do with the property. It makes sense, because of the lay of the land in that area, that there be a continuation of a residential street in that area, then connecting back up to Acclutna Drive. When will it happen? I don't know. Will there be a trade of sorts with the railroad? There's been a variety of attempts over the years to trade and/or purchase a variety of properties, there's ongoing discussions with the military, that may come back into play and include the railroad, so it's still in a, in an ebb and flow, but I can't tell you within five or 10 years if that's going to be continued.
Madam Chair, ordinarily, I agree with you, it's, you're in a position where we would probably require it if you didn't do it, but especially if it was a significant connection to a property that was absolutely needed. In this case, I don't see it as a significant connection, I mean, it would only serve a very few houses, that I could tell, because it looks like Acclutna Road, or what's the road in front of the development called Powder Road, or something like that?
Yeah.
Will end up going right, continuing to that property eventually, following the old Powder Road, and that connection will only be like a couple hundred feet probably, and it won't really serve that many automobiles. What is, do you know what, if it was a cul-de-sac, whether it would meet the requirements of the, of the limitations on cul-de-sac length?
I, I don't, it's about 200 feet longer, but there, there's a, really a great piece of land that someone can develop off the end of this between here and about, well, for about another thousand feet, there's a continuation of that bluff line, as you can see on the topo, I think it's on page two, or map two of your packet, where you can see there's a great opportunity for bluff lots for about 1,000 or 1,200 feet.
And what we talked about, Mr. Spring, just so that you know, is that if that were developed, because that's what the land is kind of saying it wants to be developed for in the future, most likely, is that we were looking at the Acclutna Parkway as being the major or minor arterial or collector into the area, and that we wanted to have the ability to limit the number of access points that would be then pushed out onto it. And if we, if we had that connection, and that meant that that next property might be able to have one less access to Acclutna Drive.
Okay, I appreciate your answer, thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson?
To the applicant, we appreciate the large readable maps we got, they helped out our job a lot. Was there a traffic impact analysis done on this?
There was a traffic impact analysis done for the master plan of all of track forty A, which had basically conceptual subdivision development associated with it, of this, this is seventy-one lots as proposed versus over about 250 condo units, if you could say that. So it's a lesser impact from a generation standpoint, but there was a full TIA for the entire area based on the phasing, and had recommendations for different improvements at different trigger points and thresholds.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, one last time, could you tell me what, I see the, what I think are the proposed DCCNRs, but there's the, the sort of thing from Spinell in there, is that just illustrative? What is, what is that included in the packet for?
Yeah, it's an illustration.
Of what could be?
Yes, correct, an example of what could be in there. And then the specifics, which we could easily add as a condition, are on your packet, page thirty-eight, well, it'd be page one through six of the submitted restrictions and CCNRs.
Got it, thanks.
And it'd be normal to have that, and we would say as approved and coordinated with the planning department. Would be a normal note we'd have on a plat.
Are there any other questions? You have two minutes and forty-four seconds left for a rebuttal.
Is there any issue left over? There's quite a few different planning documents that are associated with this one here. As far as the landscaping, in the cluster housing section, title twenty-one, it addresses landscaping separately, and so once we go over to cluster housing, then we get diverted from some of these other type of regulations, and we're under the cluster housing regulations. That's where the width comes in, into play. Hang on one second here, excuse me. There's a lot more that can be said also, while I'm looking here, on the trail or the road situation here, that the road is already addressed in the TIA, the connection was not considered in the TIA, to put that road in would be crossing over 400 feet of Class A wetland, would probably cost around four million dollars, and be about 1,000 foot long, it just simply would not be used. If you're at the intersection on the far side of Fire Creek, and you were to go down this road that crosses the creek, you'd have about 3,000 feet to go to get to the intersection of Acclutna Park Drive and Terrace, where if you went straight out, you'd only have, or straight out two terraces, you only have 1,500 feet, so it's twice the length, and nobody's ever going to do that. In the master plan, page thirty, the test, the text describing the circulation does not include this road crossing. It's not shown on figure fifteen of the master plan. Master plan, page thirty-five, figure seventeen is a conceptual layout only, and the actual layout states, and the actual layout may change depending on future subdivision layouts. Master plan, page thirty-six, the text at the top talks about figure eight, and states as a generalized concept for trails is present in figure eight, excuse me. The final location will be determined during subdivision review processes. On figure eighteen, it's only a dashed line, which indicates a possible design, not a required design. On figure thirteen in the master plan, and figure twenty, they both show the third connection going straight out to Terrace Lane.
Thank you, but we do have Commissioner Spring in the queue, so perhaps you'll get to finish your comment.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sure, I appreciate if you could finish your comment, then I have a follow-up question.
Okay, and Terrace Lane is classified in the OSHMP, excuse me, as a collector, and his job is to handle the traffic loads. Both Terrace Lane and Acclutna Park Drive are MOA-owned, and also on page fifty-three of your packet, Traffic Engineering has approved our design, along with MOA Private Development and all the other agencies, including the DOT, which is on page fifty-nine of your packet.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Spring?
Yes, I, I'm, I'm sure you're right, and I just want to make sure that I understand it, though, okay? When you referred to the lot width being acceptable under the cluster housing ordinance, twenty-one fifty to ten, and I just don't, I must be missing something, because I don't see any reference there to lot width.
Oh, in the cluster housing? Yeah, because there is no minimum.
I just want to make sure, having listened to some of your earlier questions, Tim Potter again for the record, that the master plan was set up to be as flexible as possible, and it was very specific to create its own zoning through that ordinance. We specifically brought back in the cluster plat approach subdivision, because this is a pretty complicated piece of property, and we knew that that was going to be a very useful tool. So, yes, it's basically structured after the R4 district, we have specific things, but we also say that it can be developed- But we also say that it can be developed according to that section of the code under cluster subdivisions within the master plan. And that does not include and have any lot widths in it. And it's specifically because you're going to go through another level or threshold of review, which is here for that plat subdivision review to do it that way. So in my view, there's even a higher standard of review for the cluster plat than there would be if we came in and we had fewer lots that were all minimum 50 foot wide and 6,000 square feet. So that's where that balance is. We didn't take that tool out of the toolkit and throw it away. We left it there because we knew we might use it.
I'd like to add to that, if I could, please. Is that on page 17 of the master plan? On F1, it says, "Excepts provide in subsection F2 below." A lot shall have the following minimum area and width. And if you go back to all the documents before this, F2 referred directly to the Cluster Housing Development, well, states in a Cluster Housing Development conforming to Section AMC 2150 to 10. So this F1 refers to F2, which there is a typo here. It should be F3. And I can show you the document right here, where all the previous master plans had two as what is three in this one here. So to me, there's a very solid and definite intent for one to refer to three in the master plan. And can I submit this here?
Does anyone care to see that?
I would like to see it.
All right.
You raised a good point. It's something that needs to be clarified, I think, in order to make sure that this is allowable under the master plan ordinance.
Well, for once, I have to agree with Mr. Potter that the Cluster Housing standards and requirements are a greater level, require a greater level of approval than a simple plat. So I am pleased to make that comment, actually.
If I could add one more thing too, is that we have gone through many meetings with the municipality, the planning department on this. We did a pre-application, even added in a post-application to make sure everything was straight. And they have all agreed with this interpretation.
All right. Thank you very much. I think, I don't see any other questions in the queue.
If there's anything about landscaping, I would be willing to accept that question.
Don't see it in the queue. Thank you. Thank you both very much.
I have been instructed by the secretary that as far as department recommendations are concerned, we need to seek approval individually for item number A, B, C, and D. And item number D has 19 conditions to it. So let's start with A, first, approval of the request for variance from AMC 21.80.300D, Design Standard, Lot Dimensions, The Width of a Lot Shall Be At Least One-Third The Depth of the Lot For All Lots Within the Subdivision. Commissioner Mulkey.
Moved to approve, seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Discussion, comments?
Seeing and hearing none, seeing and hearing no objections. A is approved. Moving on to B, Approval of the Cluster Housing Site Plan. Commissioner Mulkey.
So moved.
Seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. C, Approval of the Phasing Plan. Commissioner Mulkey.
So moved.
Seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Is there an objection? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. D, Approval of the Plat for Sixty Months Subject to the Nineteen Conditions As Recommended by Staff.
Madam Chair, do you want me to move these 19 and then have a separate motion to add? Or you want me to add now?
I think we should add now, if you wanna add now. Okay?
I'd like to add, move to approve the 19 conditions, and I would also like to add condition 20, that the conditions and standards that begin on what should be, or what is page 38 and should be the next six pages as an additional condition.
The covenants, codes, and restrictions.
Covenant, codes, and restrictions began on page 38 and should have been the next six pages, including the three pages that were provided to us this evening.
And you would like to see that as a plat note, is that your?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And is that?
The condition would be that those be added as a plat note.
All right. Thank you. And that has been seconded by Commissioner Parks. Is that your understanding of what you are seconding?
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Spring?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to make an amendment to that Mr. Mulkey's comment or revision regarding the covenants and restrictions. I would like to add some, to require additional covenants and restrictions. And I would like to specify what those might be.
Why don't we just go with these and then we'll?
I think we?
Let's close these 20 and then take his individually? No, you wanna do one? Okay.
We have a motion on the floor amending the motion, the main motion. We want to put the main motion on hold and hear from Commissioner Spring. Okay? All right. Commissioner Spring?
Two things. One, I'm concerned with the comment by the Ega River Street Maintenance regarding snow removal. And this type of development with the cluster development at 35-foot width with 14-foot driveway allows only 20 feet of frontage in each lot for snow storage. And you also have a problem with on-street parking. As I know in my neighborhood, where you have, you know, two-car, even two-car garage, you're gonna have some visitors and you're gonna have parking there. I think Ega River Street Maintenance has a real issue here about the need to remove snow periodically from streets with such narrow widths. Even if they aren't narrow, sometimes you need to remove them, the snow. I think there should be an additional covenant restriction that requires the Homeowners Association to add additional money to their Homeowners Association fees in the contingency in that there needs to be snow removal for public safety purposes. And that means fire department, for instance, trying to get to the end of the cul-de-sac in order to put out a fire could be inhibited by unusual amount of snowfall in a year, which really chokes the street, and they won't be able to get there. Without that kind of condition, I can't recommend approval of this plat.
Mr. Whitfield, do you have a comment?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to address the CCNRs. Mr. Mulkey, he had basically offered an amendment to include the CCNRs as a plat note. And I just wanna get clarification that you just want to adopt the CCNRs as a plat note, not carry over the six pages as a plat note. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
And can I get, can I get some language as to a recommended plat note there as well, please? Or if you're amenable to that, I can draft something or use our standard language.
I think your standard language would be appropriate.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Spring? The question was asked, what is your, what is specific, your motion?
I was afraid you would ask that.
[laughing]
I'm better at articulating what the reason is for the motion than the actual motion itself, but I'll give a stab at it, I guess. To add to the?
Okay. We've got lots of people in the queue, and I think some of them may want to help you out. Okay. All right. Tyler, and then Commissioner Ferguson.
I would add something like, resolve with Suburso plan for snow removal including the potential that if the need for snow hauling becomes a, okay, keep the first part. But I think my second part, which I need help with, is the fact that if you have to haul snow a considerable amount at this site, I don't think it's fair to put that cost on the majority of people that pay through Suburso for their snow removal. And I think that's what Mr. Spring is trying to get at. We don't know yet if you're gonna need to haul snow. So that's what the first part is, just resolve the need for snow removal. The second part, which I think is a good point, is in this type of development, there very well may need to be more hauling than there is in other spots. And that's where, even though it's a public road, there likely is a cost sharing that needs to be placed on these homeowners. And with that second part, I'm hazy as well. But I would add, resolve with Suburso the need, the snow removal plan as a simple note.
I think that's a good note. I don't know how to address the other issue because, you know, this is a public road, not a private road. If it were a private road, it would be an easy matter. But it's not. It's a public road. So.
Which is why it's a problem, which is why it's difficult.
Right. Yeah, it's problematic. I don't, I don't, so I like your first part. I don't know what to do about the second part. Commissioner Ferguson?
On the snow removal, I can remember this being debated long and hard on Title 21 discussions on this thing and going back quite a ways. But the thing that caught my eye is these units are set back quite a bit more than normal. And if they were all at 10-foot, I would be on board with you, Commissioner Spring. But they're back 28, 40 feet, so there is plenty of room in the front yard to blow snow. And so I think the issue is resolved with the setback of the house. Now unfortunately, neither you or I can prove our case in this thing until it gets built on it. But on the snow removal, I think it's handled with the setback. Because if these were all up at 10-foot, it'd be a much bigger issue. But if you've got 40 feet, that's up to three or four rows away from us here. You can blow a lot of snow in that area, and you're only clearing 60 feet, you know, 30 foot on one side. So, you know, I think the problem is corrected. I would support a note to resolve it with the Road Use District. And I agree with that. I don't think it's appropriate to put the cost on these homeowners on that.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Mulkey, and then Commissioner Spring?
I'd be fine with Commissioner Robinson's words about coordinating with Suburso, but I agree with Commissioner Ferguson. I think with the house setbacks, the sidewalk that's set back from the road, I think we're, I don't think we're in as bad shape as Suburso's initial response. So I'm comfortable just leaving with what Commissioner Robinson has proposed, no further.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Spring, did you have a comment additionally?
I think the commissioners have a good point. I'm afraid, though, that it's gonna be a meaningless condition because to resolve with the Suburso Board or the Street Maintenance will mean that they'll say, well, we don't have money, which I know for a fact, for snow hauling. And so the resolution will be, we're not gonna haul, and we're gonna keep the snow. Whether or not they can clear it well enough to allow fire trucks through is gonna be an issue, or it could be an issue, and it won't be resolved.
Commissioner Whit, I'm not Commissioner Whitfield. Would you like to be a commissioner? [laughing] We have a vacancy.
Through the chair.
All right.
Mr. Spring, I think Street Maintenance's main concern here is lifting the blade and plowing the snow with the 35-foot lot widths. I think that's their main concern. I think we've got a 60-foot wide dedicated right-of-way with sufficient room to provide for snow storage. If the commissioners feel it's appropriate, we could certainly, and the petitioners amenable to it, provide for a five-foot snow storage easement on either side of the road. But I think that Street Maintenance's main concern is the problems associated with lifting and dropping the blade when plowing the street. I think that's their main concern.
All right. Thank you very much. So we are, we have item number 20, which is to add the CCNRs as a plat note. I'm not confused. I can't remember if we voted on that. We have not voted on that. Right, the second amendment. But let's go, let's vote on amendment number 20. I think we can do that. 20. All right. It's all one motion with one additional condition. All right. Thank you, Karen. All right. So do we have 21, or do we not have 21? No. No. We want to, we're doing the amendment. We're discussing it. And I asked for a motion regarding the snow storage and the snow removal. I didn't get it, so I'm gonna ask one more time, if we can go back, and ask one more time. Is there another, is there another motion? Is there another motion? All right. Seeing and hearing none?
If I'm, I move that we add condition 20, resolve with Suburso.
It'd be 21.
21, resolve with Suburso the snow removal, a snow removal plan.
All right. Do we have a second? We have, and a second by Commissioner Mulkey. Commissioner Spring, do you have a comment? No, you're good? All right. Okay. All right. So now we have two amendments, one for the CCNR and one for resolve the issue of the snow storage and maintenance. All right. Are there any others? All right. Seeing and hearing no others? That is correct. All right. Yes, we're voting. On D, Approval of the Plat for Sixty Months Subject to 21 Conditions. Which we have approved. So now we are voting on D. Okay? This is it. We have approved that. All right? There was no objection. We're back to the main motion. Which has been moved?
D?
D?
D1 through 21.
D1 through 21. I'm really sorry. We can, you're gonna have to do it manually. We're gonna vote. John can't vote?
I vote.
John? All right. John votes yes. This motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right.
Oh, Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner?
Sorry, I wanted to add one more condition to that one, but it's too late probably.
It is too late.
The site plan, I believe, didn't show some of the required visual landscaping requirements on the common open space. So I wanted to make an amendment to revise the site plan to show the landscaping requirements.
I don't know if we can do that, quite frankly.
Could they, Michael?
Don't pack up quite yet.
Well, how about for my findings, we just list on page 12, the, what the staff has under variance request, and that it meets the requirements. We'll just list those as the findings, close that out.
Yes.
Is that fair enough?
Yes, thank you.
Is that okay with the staff here, Karen? My findings, we just use what the staff has under variance request, those 1 through 4, sufficient?
All right. Ms. Dean has, under our program, under our, we have reports, and we have additional comments from commissioners, and Ms. Dean?
I'd like the commission and staff to hear my thoughts about the Anchorage housing market analysis that was done last year, related to our thoughts for 2013 and 2014, that I think we really need to focus on the information on pages 50 through 56 about making housing available to people, and the difficulties that we face in the future here in Anchorage. And one of the, one of the focuses listed on here as ways to increase housing availability was to improve the regulatory process. I would like to see Planning and Zoning Commission work with the Planning Department, which encompasses building safety, to come up with streamlining the regulatory process so that we can see those additional costs not increase the cost of housing. And I think that might be within our area.
It most definitely is. When you read the statute about the authority of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it most certainly is within the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Are you talking about streamlining the vertical construction or, and/or subdivision development, or?
I'll read what it says here in the paragraph.
Okay.
Where possible, in the land use code, regulations should be clear and non-discretionary. Exceptions should be standardized. Development alternatives provided as choices in by right, non-discretionary standards, and review processes shortened. Three to five years after the revision of Title 21 has been adopted, the municipality may want to evaluate whether the revisions clarify the development code sufficiently. The municipality could also continue to work with key stakeholders to improve other sections of the code and internal policies that implement development, including the Design Criteria Manual and the Permit Process.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate those comments and agree wholeheartedly. Commissioner Mulcahy?
As you just said, I agree with it. I think it's great. What's the process? So, what do we, I totally support the idea. Got an idea, how do we, how do we start moving forward on this? I think it's fantastic.
I think it would be appropriate for us to prepare a resolution to pass on to the Assembly that would reiterate that paragraph, and specifically, as we've had previous discussions, include a public process for the review of the Design Criteria Manual, beginning at the Planning and Zoning Commission level.
I totally support that. I've heard, anecdotally, and I apologize to Commissioner Dean, I'm not as familiar with that paragraph you're talking about, but I've heard some developers say that the regulatory process here can add as much as 30% to the cost of construction, and we can do better.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, I would echo that. I think the report states a pretty clear problem. I can say both professionally and personally, it's challenging to find and build housing in this community, and certainly to redevelop areas of town. I know the mayor has a kitchen cabinet that he's convened to look at solutions to housing issues, and has a number of people, including my boss, you know, working to that effort. But I do echo that when we started down the path of Title 21, we talked a lot about zoning, but developing has a lot to do about things outside of the zoning code as well. And it's not just the Criteria Manual, it's fire code, it's traffic engineering standards, it's all of these things. And communities all around the country get, they have a, you know, they have their goals, and they make fire and traffic and zoning and private development, and everybody sit down together and resolve what in effect are competing public policy goals. And they're real, and they have to do, on the one hand, with public safety, but on the other hand, with cost and being a thriving community, and how you balance those things. And until we sit down and start to really deal with all of those things, we're all going to continue to be frustrated.
Thank you. Very well said. Any, any other comments? All right. And Karen, while you're here, we want to say thank you for an excellent housing report. I consider that the best report that's come out of the long-range planning department in the last couple of years. Yep. All right. Erica?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if you're finished with that topic, but I did want to request that on this date, when we did the annual election of officers, it seems also an appropriate time to review the committee assignments.
All right. Good idea. Thank you. The AMATS Committee, we will keep Commissioner Pruse on that, since he's not here. Is there anyone else who wishes to serve on the AMATS Committee? I would like to continue, Erica, to be notified of the meetings. I doubt that I'll be able to attend many, but I would like to be notified.
Of the AMATS meetings?
Yes. School Site Selection Committee, I think we can do away with that committee, because we heard from former, or soon-to-be former Commissioner Browder and Mr. Abbott, that they have no plans for school site selections. Citizens Air Quality Committee, Ms. Dean?
It's pretty much done, because we don't have to do air quality standards really anymore. We have no more, anything happening.
All right. Thank you. Airport Master Plan Committee, that was Mr. Pruse. I know he has an airplane, so we'll just keep him on that committee. Parks Planning Committee, Mr. Mulcahy?
I have not done a good job of that, for sure.
Uh-huh.
I try to stay involved in the Eagle River Parks, but, you know, the suburb to our south, I don't get involved with very much.
All right. Okay.
That you guys call Anchorage.
Title 21. I'm going to cross that one off our list. Capital Improvements Committee, Commissioner Mulcahy? I think we...
Just the schools.
The school, right. Capital Improvement, no, we have the MOA. We have the...
We should do it inside what we need to do.
Right.
And then staff knows.
Jeff, like, I think we need to add a group on private process on...
UMed?
No, no.
Mr. Ferguson, could you speak into your microphone for the record, please?
If I turned it on, I turned it off. I'm sorry. Rather than go through this list that, and maybe we need a committee to look at the process of long-range planning, because we seem to have a lot of issues on that...
Right.
...that are uniform to those. So, I'm not in favor of taking this list that is dated.
Right.
I would prefer to come up with those three committees.
Madam Chair, that kind of like way Jim's thinking, why don't we just scrap this tonight and come back next time we meet with some suggestions on what really we should be spending our time doing?
I think that, I think that's an excellent, an excellent idea. So, we will have that discussion next week.
So, everybody think about it, and come back next week, and let's create some committee assignments.
All right. Okay. Good idea. Anything else? All right. Seeing and hearing nothing, I have a motion to adjourn. Quick, quick. Ms. Dean, second, second. Come on, you guys. Second. All right. Thank you, Peter. Thank you. We're adjourned. Second. All right. Thank you, Peter. Thank you. We're adjourned.